Members of the public, always a pleasure to see everybody. Thanks for being here. Erica, you call roll, please.
Councilmember McKay.
Here.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here. We all stand for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're excited about this presentation and looking forward to... Leslie, it's great to see you. I know that you had a lot of time with a lot of us and you put together some survey, and I know that you got some results, and we did take a look at some of the preliminary results and, quite frankly, very happy about what those results said. So without any further ado, please come on up, and it's a pleasure to see you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Leslie Leep, and I have been working with the town...
If you want to grab that mic, take it out of there and hold it.
I don't think it's on.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Leep, and I've been working with the town on their strategic planning for the past six months. And so I'm here to present some results of where we are at this point, and I'm very excited to be here. It's good to see all of you. We have been working behind the scenes diligently, and it's very exciting to be here to show you all of the hard work of the staff and of the advisory board members and, of course, of the council. What I'd like to review tonight is the front-end analysis of the process of the strategic planning process. And what that consists of is doing an examination of the town's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges. We asked the council about all of that. We asked the advisory board members. We asked the staff. And we compiled all of that and have done some analysis. I'm going to just present some highlights tonight. The report for the council that has all of the details of all of the SWAC information will be available to you on Monday for your pleasure reading. So I want to go ahead and examine the SWAC tonight, as well as then look at some of the results from the citizen survey, share with you the excellent value statement that the staff put together. I was just very pleased and honored to work with them on that, and I wanted to show that with you, and then I wanted to discuss some next steps. As I had just mentioned, we did a series of focus groups, one with advisory board members, one with staff, and then the council participated in the SWAC by individual interviews as well as providing written information. So I aggregated all of that in looking at the strengths and the weaknesses, the opportunities and the challenges, and I just wanted to share a few of the things that emerged from this analysis. Of course, it's much more detailed than what I have here this evening. As I said, all of it will be in the full report that you'll receive on Monday. Some of the common themes that were identified by all of the groups talked about town leadership, the staff, and the volunteers. So I would say a lot of the people in this room, right? The staff, the volunteers, people who participate in government, the council, the town administrator. And so when looking at the strengths in this category, folks said how competent and responsive and experienced the staff is, which I'll show you a little bit more about that later from the citizen survey. The accessibility to the town administrator and staff was also another strength. The group, all of the groups, the council, the advisory board members, the staff, having a group vision and supporting one another to achieve that vision was another common theme among the groups, as well as the strong working relationships. Just this small category of strengths, there's so many more that are listed in the full report, just these few provide such a solid foundation to build a strategic plan on. So I think that having these internal strengths is a great place to start, and it is wonderful that all of the groups who participated, the focus groups and the interviews, mentioned this. It was across all of the groups. We also looked at some of the weaknesses, some of the internal weaknesses of the town, and what emerged across all three groups, of course, was that we have too few resources and that we have a limited budget. I don't think that's a surprise for anyone. Also what emerged was a lack of standard operating procedures and policies. Of course, many are in place, but there are some that felt that there needed to be perhaps a little bit more systematic way to go about that, which then also led to some processes who are still antiquated. And I think that council staff are already familiar with some of those issues. Another thing that emerged across all groups was that their benefits for the staff are very limited, and that, of course, comes from too few resources and limited budgets as well, but some problems with health insurance and some retirement contributions. So that emerged as an internal weakness. Then the primary resilience dependency on external contractors, which is a very interesting component here, for some that can be seen as a strength, for others that can be seen as a weakness. Then a very restrictive purchasing code was also a common theme in a couple of the groups. So these are some of the organizational resources of the weaknesses that we need to address in our strategic planning process in order to deal with some of these issues. So we needed to pay attention to these. In addition, then, we looked at some of the external opportunities. The strengths and the weaknesses are primarily internal to the town, whereas the challenges and the opportunities are more external. So one of the themes that emerged was in terms of other government or agencies and organizations being able to work with other agencies on cities, on projects, being able to do intergovernmental things. Also, the possibility of receiving more grants, which is a good opportunity, especially since resources are limited here. And then possible commercial development, minimal but critical commercial areas maybe could be tapped to increase the tax base depending on what that actual opportunities are. But these are some of the things that emerged from, of course, the experts, right, who are the staff and the council and the advisory board members. And finally, then, some of the external challenges. Once again, these are just a few of what all of the groups came up with. But in terms of looking at the local, regional, state, this first one, after I saw this in the printout, I thought, maybe this doesn't look very good, that legislation must be followed. Of course, it must be followed. But the point was here is that sometimes, if you go down a couple of bullets, unfunded procedures that come along with legislation, new accounting and reporting mandates that come along with legislation cost a lot of money to implement, but the money isn't always given to the town to actually deal with those changes. So this is seen as one of those challenges. Also, one of the challenges listed is sometimes the difficulty of working with other local governments because there is a lot of red tape and there is a lot of bureaucracy that sometimes needs to be dealt with. Also then, funding issues, economic-related issues that came out in each one of the groups. There's a lot of external agencies that are primarily responsible for some of the things here in the town, one of them being the Department of Transportation with roads. So dealing with the Department of Transportation in maintaining roads and improving roads is sometimes difficult, especially when you're dealing with an aging infrastructure and you just don't have that funding. So those are some of the challenges that emerged from the SWAC analysis as part of the strategic planning. So really, that provides such a wealth of information for us to think about what goals we might develop to deal with the weaknesses and the challenges, but at the same time taking advantage of the strengths and the opportunities. So I wanted to share that with you. In addition, I wanted to share with you the excellent citizen survey results. I've never seen anything like it. I've been doing this for 22 years. I have done, I don't know how many citizen surveys now, I guess, I don't know, 20, maybe 25 for a variety of cities. No one has the high numbers of satisfaction that Southwest Ranches does. So I'm just tickled pink about that because it's fun standing up here with good news. And so I just wanted to share some of the findings with you. And once again, all of the results from the citizen survey will be available in the report that will be distributed to you next week. I think you know this, but let me just review you real quick. The surveys were developed in conjunction, you know, with the staff. I mean, we did this as a group. And Andy, of course, was just so important. Erica helped so much, everybody played such an important role. And so we actually sent the surveys out to everybody in the town in the December-January newsletter. And we were very pleased to get 310 returned, actually more were returned than that. The 310 is what I could use. So we had, I think, about 340-something, but not all of them were usable. And by that, I mean, more data was missing than was available, and so those are not usually very useful. But you know this, I think, but we assessed the level of contact that citizens, not some businesses, not all, have had with the city government, but then we looked at their level of satisfaction of that contact, and I'm going to show you those results in a minute, and as well as measure the strategic planning components that we wanted to get their input of what they thought was important for the strategic plan. Oh, gosh, that's hard to see. I'm sorry about that. For some reason, I envisioned a big screen. These are just the demographics, and I'll just tell you what they are real quick. Interestingly enough, the distribution between the four districts was almost identical. 25 percent, you can see at the top of your printed copy there, 25 percent from District 1, 26 from District 2, 24 from District 3, and 25 from District 4. In terms of the income, people have a very high level of income here. So 42 percent of the sample are actually making $150,000 or more, and the education level is higher than I've seen it in any other city. 22 percent have gone to graduate school, and 41 percent have a four-year degree. Very, I mean, there's no other demographics pretty much in any city. Of the respondents, of course. Actually, though, I compared these to your 2010 census data. I compared all of the, we actually included an ethnic category with the race, and those are very similar to the U.S. Census. The age is a little bit different distribution, but household size is very similar, but the education level is different than how they capture it in the census, so it's not comparable. We did have the largest group, 34 percent, 51- to 60-year-olds who filled out the survey, and 27 percent in the 61 category. But we did have young folks as well. And a lot of people did the survey for the whole household, so they would write in, "Oh, yeah, you know, we have two kids," and so on and so forth. So we know that this is a representative sample of families as well. This is the graph that shows the responses for questions about the experiences that people have with the government. Green is good. It's just, it's almost like a, well, the blue in the middle is neutral, right? And red is bad. We all associate green good, green go, so on and so forth. So what we asked is how much contact people had, and if they didn't have any contact, then they didn't answer these questions. But if they did have contact, we asked them how professional the staff was, and for these, we asked them from very dissatisfied to very satisfied, but I combined the satisfied and very satisfied categories and the very dissatisfied and the dissatisfied categories, just for the graphical representation. So only 11 percent were either very dissatisfied or dissatisfied, as compared to 78 percent were either satisfied or very satisfied with the professionalism of the employees, which is outstanding. Also, how well was the question answered? 71 percent said they were satisfied, very was very satisfied, and then overall satisfaction, 66 percent. So that's very, very positive results in terms of interactions with staff here in the town. Once again, I am a little embarrassed. I was thinking big screen, not small screen, so I apologize for those of you who can't see this, but I'll explain it. We wanted to find out what you all think of services in the town, and so we asked you to rate essentially how satisfied you are with these services, and we also said if you don't use the service, that was one option. So these are just the people who've used these services. And for the first time ever, sanitation beat out fire medical. In every survey I've ever done, fire medical is always at top because they save lives. I mean, it's hard to, you know, you're very satisfied about that, but sanitation, so some, I don't know what's, something must be going right here. 83 percent were satisfied or very dissatisfied. Code enforcement brings up the bottom, but still, the highest level of satisfaction I've ever seen in any city survey. Usually, it's, there usually, there is no satisfaction with code enforcement, but 35 percent are very dissatisfied or dissatisfied. So that's still something to deal with, right? So it'd be interesting. We need to talk about if some of the processes that are going on that might be some of the problems might impact code enforcement, see if we can make it easier for them. So overall, the ratings of services are very good, and I need to speed up because I told them I'd only take a half hour. This is the quality of life in the neighborhood and in the town of Southwest Ranches. Once again, I've never seen numbers like this. 71 percent said their neighborhood, their quality of life in their neighborhood is excellent. 74 percent said the quality of life in the town is excellent, with very small, 5 percent poor, 6 percent poor on those two, which I think is good. And it's a, you know, it's a beautiful area, and people are happy to live here, and the rural lifestyle is important, of course, and I think that leads to a lot of quality of life. We also asked citizens to identify what they think is important for strategic plans, for the strategic plan. We need to know what you want us to focus on. And maintaining a rural lifestyle, 74 percent said that needs to be the biggest focus of the strategic plan, maintaining that rural lifestyle. Maintaining roads comes in at second. And you can see a pattern here with roads. By the way, when you see the full report on Monday, the qualitative or the open-ended questions are also analyzed, and one of the questions we ask is, "How has your neighborhood changed from a year ago?" Asking them to explain it to us, and by far, the number-one response is traffic. So roads, maintaining roads, traffic, and not having the funding to deal with it is definitely a theme that we're going to have to deal with, I think. Also then, then a big drop on improving communications with citizen, and then the last three are offering more programs for families and for seniors and for youth. We split those separately. So there's definitely, you see here, maintaining the rural lifestyle is really the most important. There's no question. Let's just say that. The last thing I wanted, oh, so that's just the brief citizen survey, but you'll certainly see the results, you'll see all of it in the report. But great news. It's all good news. And they really give us some, also some good comments to think about that you'll see in the report. Then in addition to doing all of that, we worked, the employees and I worked, and of course, all, you know, Andy and so on and so forth, worked on developing an employee value statement. And originally, we started just by identifying the values that we felt were important and then decided to prioritize some of those, and then the staff came up with this fabulous statement, which is, it's so, it's holistic and encompasses so many aspects. I certainly don't need to read it to you, but I feel so good when I do read it. I'm going to. "The staff of Southwest Ranches respects our community." They said that has to be first. No ands, buts about it, put it first. And so they, "Respects our community and is committed to working as a professional team," which professional was really a very important part of this, "that exhibits integrity, truthfulness, accountability while providing outstanding customer service." So that's what they are dedicated to and what their values are, which will be also a foundational component for the development of the, or the, I should say, creation, development, revision of the mission and vision statement, which is our next step. So all of this information will be used for that, and I just want to quickly wrap up by telling you what our next steps are. On April 3rd, I am meeting with the staff, and we are going to revise and create the mission and vision statements. On April 10th, we are, and then Andy will bring those to you. He'll present those to you. Right, Andy?
Yes.
And then we are going to develop the goals and objectives. On April 10th, we're going to start on the goals. From there, we'll be developing each, each goal will have a series of objectives, and we will take those objectives and use those as the foundation for the performance evaluation, performance measurement system that we will develop so they can keep track of whether or not they're achieving their objectives, so that they can attain their goal to achieve the mission. That's what we're here to do. So it's worked out great that the timing, we're working with the budget preparation process as well to make sure all of this is combined together, integrated together. So the fun now begins, as far as I'm concerned. The front-end analysis is always interesting, but with such good news, the fun is just about, is just beginning. So I look forward to working with you. Do you have, should I take questions, or do you have?
Dr. Leep, thank you. And just to say a couple of things before, and if you have any comments or questions. I think that one thing that is very, very important, if you take a look at the responses, all districts were represented just about equally. 25 percent in District 1, 26 percent in District 2, 24 percent in District 3, and 25 percent in District 4. So with respect to where this information comes from, it's pretty much equal throughout the entire town.
Which is so important.
With regards to, you know, the satisfy, obviously, we have some things that we need to address and work on, but council, town staff, members of the committees, this is great news, you know, and we all knew quite frankly that this is kind of a confirmation of what our thoughts were with regards to the job that you do for the town of Southwest Ranches every day. And to see it, it's got to make you feel real darn good, and congratulations. And again, as you said, Dr. Leep, the highest level of satisfactions that you have ever seen in the 20 or 25 that you have done. So I'm going to take a couple of seconds to applaud you all. That doesn't mean we rest on our laurels, right, Dr. Leep? I'm sorry.
But also, I just want to acknowledge that it has a lot to do with you all, too.
Well, that was awful nice, awful nice of you.
Just want to make sure that's clear.
Awful nice of you.
Any other questions?
Counsel, any questions of Dr. Leep?
Maybe I might have missed it, all this thing, and you might have said that, but I wear a hairnet, sometimes I don't hear it. How did you figure that this 310 in population compared with others? Are we good or bad on the amount of people?
Well, the most important, it's not really comparable to other cities because it's all based on population size. So for your population size, the 310 gives us a representative sample at a 90% confidence level, 5 percent plus or minus margin of error. I'm sorry to sound like a statistician, but that's what I actually am. But the good, so the good news is, is this number is high enough that we can say that this is a statistically representative sample of all of your residents. In other words, enough to return them. But for a city that has 80,000, they need more surveys returned. So that isn't comparable across cities. But in terms of the response rate, your response rate is, I would say, higher than average. There's no doubt about that. But the exact number, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have all the other cities memorized. I don't know what the response rates are for the other cities, so.
I think we have, Andy, don't we have about 400 residential units?
We have just under 2,500, council member, and one was sent to every single home in town.
Right. And the amount that was returned gives us a representative sample of all of your residents, and that's what's important because then we can say statistically this represents all residents.
Doc? Yeah, I guess one thing I want to say is wow, amazing. But the other thing I want to point out, I look at it from a business aspect, and we did like a direct mail piece to about 2,500 residents, and the return, if you get 2% to 5%, that's considered amazing. So you don't happen to know what that number is returned for 300 and some odd, but it's, so we're better than the best mail return on a business aspect that you would ever expect. So I want everybody to look at it from that aspect and realize that that's an outrageous return on a piece like that.
And I think that shows how much your residents care.
It could be good or bad. We may have that many people that's mad at us.
Oh, no, no, no.
They'll usually show up and let us know.
Right, that would have shown in the results. If people were angry, that would have shown up in the results. Okay, good.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Sure, my pleasure.
Dr. Leep Kent, thank you enough. We look forward to working with you again in the future, and of course, this will drive and help assist with some of our goals and objectives because there is lots and lots of good information as part of this survey and the survey results. And us, obviously, as members that represent the community, this is the most important feedback and information that we can, that we can get. So as a result of that, obviously, we know the areas that we need to focus on and some of the things that we need to start addressing, not the least of which is infrastructure and the ability to fund a lot of those projects, which are things we're working on at this time. But again, thank you, appreciate it very much, and again, we look forward to working with you in the future. And again, council, staff, committees, you know, all those that are involved in this process and make a contribution to the town every day, you ought to be feeling really, really good tonight with regards to this feedback. And don't rest on your laurels, let's not get complacent. You know, these percentages, this ought to be something that we ought to take a look at every couple of years. But very, very, very proud. I'm, if I look like, I'm exceptionally happy, as is everybody that's up here, I can assure you that we certainly are. So congratulations and great job, and look forward to the challenges and the things that you've highlighted for us that we need to take a look at. We look forward to those challenges and addressing those challenges ahead. But thank you, Dr. Leep. We appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you. I'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that being said, this meeting is hereby, no, just kidding. That's about as best we, we should have that at the end of the meeting. What a great feeling walking out of here. I suspect it'll still be the same after we get finished with the last item. Okay, quasi-judicial items. Keith?
Yeah, Mayor, we have one quasi-judicial item tonight, and that's the one dealing with Andy Town Substation, no relation to our town administrator. But is FPNL present? I don't believe they are tonight. What I'll do, because this one's really something that's come to us as a security issue and something that the town has asked to address, so when we generally have these non-controversial items, we ask everyone, "Does anyone have an issue if we waive quasi-judicial procedure for this item?" And if there's no objections, we'll waive it, just read the item and tell everyone what's it about. Does anyone have any issues if we waive quasi-judicial on this item? Seeing none, Erica, just read the item and we'll go from there.
Consideration of variance application VA-068-14 Florida Power and Light Company, owner Greg Hall, petitioner. Property located at 7101 U.S. Highway 27. Petitioner seeking relief from the following code requirements. From subsection 045-030A, establishing a maximum height of 8 From subsection 045-030A, establishing a maximum height of eight feet for any fenced wall located within any required yard in the A1 district, to exceed by four feet the maximum height limit in order to install a new 12-foot concrete wall around a transmission substation to enhance security of the facility. From subsection 075-070D, which requires non-residential uses, to be screened by an opaque barrier surrounded by trees, shrubs, and ground cover. To waive the requirement for trees, shrubs, and ground cover around the perimeter of the opaque barrier.
All right. So Mayor, to tell you how this item came up, we got a call from Florida Power and Light, and so did zoning. We got calls from different people at the organization, that, who advised us that as a result of an incident that occurred in California, that they were upgrading all of their security around their major substations to try to prevent security breaches in the future. And they were, they have a standard now, which they've worked with Homeland Security on, which is a 12-foot wall, decorative wall, very nice looking wall, that they're putting around all their substations, but our code didn't allow it. So they asked us what we could do. Andy and I actually thought about doing some sort of code amendment that we would present to the council for security reasons to have it done, but they said, you know what, let's just do the variance, there's no reason not to, and bring it before the council. The one thing that FPNL requested is that this is Andy Town, which is really remote location. So what they said is, we're going to do this decorative wall immediately, but we want to have some sort of deal with the town that relating to the landscaping, because we have very rigorous requirements for landscaping around walls. So what FPNL asked is, if a homeowner ever buys a home and constructs a home, because it's really in the middle of nowhere, and within 1,000 feet of the location, they will bring up the entire site to code with all the landscaping. But provided that no one comes within 1,000 feet of them, they were asking if the council would similarly waive that landscape requirement. That's all in here, it's all agreed to with FPNL, subject to the council's approval. I see Paul Bunyan's here for the town staff today. Some, some people got that. Jeff finally, didn't want to look like he was 20, so it looks good, yeah. Do you have anything further to add? No. All right. Any member of the public have anything, any comments to make on this item? Anyway, seeing none, public session's closed. Mayor?
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, Keith. Motion in a second to approve. Call a question, please, Erica.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, that concludes our quasi judicial item.
I, I just want to confirm for the record, and normally is the case, but it was a motion to approve, subject to the staff conditions and the stipulations, correct?
Yes.
Anything else from us, Keith?
We're good.
Okay. Item number five, public comment.
We only have one speaker tonight, Mary Gay Chapels.
I'm Mary Gay Chapels, on Dykes and Sterling. I've already discussed this with the town administrator and involved Davies, town administrator and mayor. I have a problem. The Hawksbluff Elementary School has a concrete sign up that says Hawksbluff with two little lights on it at night, and it's fine. It's not offensive. Down Sterling Road, they have a ground level that stands about this high, faces out. It's lit at night, and it hasn't been lit for, I think, nine years. I mean, as long as I've been around, it's never been lit, but all of a sudden, they fixed the lighting in it, and now it's lit. And that's fine, because it faces Davie. It's in Davie, it's on Sterling, and it faces south. I have no problem with it. Now they want to, in fact, I've been told, it's been bought for $18,000. They bought a four by eight, similar to Walgreens, and it's going to be three and a half feet off the ground. I was originally told that they were going to replace the concrete sign. Now I'm told that they're going to put it in front of the concrete sign. And it's going to have three lines of whatever those lights are, and it's going to be like somebody texting, right there on the corner of Dykes and Sterling. And those lights, in red, with three lines of information, dit, 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 going across, is going to be facing my house, going in my front door, and my bedrooms. And when they were confronted, basically, the elementary school principal, this is what she wants, and the PTA is paying for it, and so, welcome to Hooker Lane. I think we'll just change the name. We're now going to have these wonderful lighting, dit, 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 right there on the corner of Sterling and Dykes. Now, I had a woman say about four blocks away, well, it's not going to bother me. Well, you know what, maybe I'll put a sign up myself on both corners of my property, all four corners, and light it up. And let's see how much they like it. I think the schools are allowed to do pretty much whatever they want. I don't think cities have much say in it. I made a phone call to Patty Good, who referred it to the superintendent, and she said to me, he would return my call. As of today, I have not heard a word from the superintendent, who is being paid with my tax dollars. So, I'm a little upset about the whole thing. And, and I know this town can't do anything, because it's in Davie, it's happening in Davie, and I don't know that Davie can stop them. I think this has to be directly from the school board. So, I guess my next visit is going to be to the school board, to raise holy heaven. Thank you.
Mayor, we have another speaker, Joseph Brucio? Brucio?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, I hope you're all doing well. This is the first time I've ever come up to see you guys. I've been a resident of Southwest Ranches for 27 years. I'm almost ashamed to say I am. I'll tell you why. I'm watching my neighbors, people coming through here. I'm watching the speed limit. It's disgusting, guys. We can all live and let live here. I understand what you're going to tell me, the golf carts, the horses. You can make the speed limit 10 miles an hour, guys, the idiots aren't going to keep it. So all you're doing is giving tickets to people going to work, coming to work, and I'm ashamed of them, of being a member of this town, because you're doing that. Think about what you're doing. I don't think you are. So I came up here to try to bring it to your attention. That's all really I got to say. But I'd really like to see you guys address it. As far as you're thinking tonight, give you a little suggestion, I'm a businessman, too. You want some, got people to come back with notifications? Notify a little more than in the wagler. Put some signs on the billboards, do this, do that. My father-in-law used to come up here, and he used to try to get me to come up here, and I used to say, nah, I don't want to get involved in that BS. You'll see me up here from now on, because I'm going to represent him, Marvin Clement, he's dead. But I'm going to have a voice up here. We're not doing right things here. We need to change, guys. Take a look at it. I understand what you're going to tell me, and I know what you all think, but think what I'm telling you. You make a 10, and tell me these idiots that are doing 90 out here are going to do 10. Come on. We all got more common sense. Have a good day. I'm sorry to waste your time, guys, I just want to speak my mind. But I'm impressed with you guys, you made a good decision.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Can I just leave this line and introduce?
Okay, that concludes public comment. Move on to item number six, board reports. Any members of any of the boards wish to, or have any comments? That's very unusual. Seeing no comments from any board members? That concludes item number six. Item number seven, council member comments. Eri?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you everybody for coming. I'm going to be really brief, because I'm probably going to start coughing, some allergy attacks right now. Just want to comment on Water Matters. If you look at your screen, we, I took some pictures. I want to tell you what an outstanding job our, our town was represented by December and Chris. And if you see a few of these shots that go through, if there was a best of show award, hands down, would have gotten it. I walked through the whole area, and everybody was amazed. That's all people were talking about, was the Southwest Ranches booth, so that's, if everybody can see it, as it goes through. And there's our town administrator and his lovely wife, so. Anyway, I'm going to be quiet from now on.
Nice legs, Andy, very nice legs. Are we flipping through the photos? 20 or 25?
This is all December's, this is all December's garden, all of this. This is all brought in. None of this is, was permanent.
Wow.
Wow.
Great job. Wish December was here. December, where are you?
Is she?
I'll bet, I'll bet. Outstanding, outstanding job. Okay, as we continue to flip through the photographs, any other council member wish to comment? Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. The, at the recent Country States HOA meeting, there was, brought up that, and I see Jim's here, so I appreciate that, the opportunities of possibly doing a Tiger Grant, and some opportunities there, and so I just wanted to bring that up, that that's being worked on there. Obviously, I think it's a lot more involved, and there's a lot more coordination that needs to take place between the town and, and any HOA that would try and take on that type of a, an endeavor. But, but I did want to bring it up here, so that we all were aware of it, and, and can assist and can, and kind of guide that as well. The other thing that I wanted to provide an update on is the Tis Door Program. We are going to be having a meeting, which is the repaving of the town, which I was, by the way, very pleased to see how high a priority that was in the survey that was sent out there. Fifty-one percent of the folks see that as a high priority, so I think that's, that's good to see as well. But, we're beginning, getting together from a legal standpoint, there's really three components to it. There is the roads themselves, there's the legal component, and then the funding component, and so going to be starting to work on the legal component of that. So I wanted everybody to be aware of that. And, and, and the last thing I wanted to touch on was just the quick update on the, the road and traffic issues that are out between 185th and 190th, and working with the town administration, appreciate their help in getting kind of the subgroups together, so that we can start getting together on some of the midterm type priorities there. I know Emily's doing a great job in getting some of the immediate stuff, and getting the quotes and bids and things out there, so that's going to be happening, too. But, I wanted people to know that those workshops, things are being done, and we're, we're taking some steps to move things forward, so appreciate that.
Steve, I could jump in on part of your conversation. I'm just sharing part of Steve's conversation, I'm not taking over Freddie, a turn here. I just want to jump in with part of what you brought up. I came in on that HOA meeting, and heard that information, all that was good stuff. The dilemma and problem we're going to have, I think, and I think we need to consult with the county, town attorney related to this, is that they're more of a civic association, not an HOA, and they can't do anything out there on behalf of us, for the town. So I think in the avenue, or however that works, I think it should go through the town attorney before we walk too close to that line and cross it. And they're representing us on behalf of the town, because that's not going to work.
Right. And that was the point I was making earlier, that, that it's going to take, obviously, a lot more involvement in the town, you know, trying to bring out that point, that this is not something that a civic association or an HOA can do on their own, on behalf of the town. And that it is going to take some serious coordination between the two, if we're going to make any progress on it.
Yeah, yeah, I just, it didn't sound strong enough, because, you know, you don't want to get to a point where they're sticking their neck out there, and they're, say they're representing us, and we don't know anything about it, or whatever the case might be, and then it gets in the lawyer's hand, and it's like, wow, why are they doing this? So, I would say we would consult with Keith, before we go any further, not that we don't want to do that, and if there's money out there and it's available to us, that we wouldn't be on board with it, but we just about to be very careful in how we tread forward, especially since they're not an HOA, so to speak.
I don't disagree. That was my point.
Very good, Freddie?
Sorry, Freddie.
Yeah. Actually, I usually, it falls on, most of the time, the same time the council falls on it, but I go to MPO once a month, and a couple of things that came up today that might affect you all, it may not affect you, but I guess one of the hottest things they were talking about today, to start with, was bicycles and bicycle rideaways, and what we need to do. And I, I don't know this for a fact, Andy, but I, I heard at the meeting today that a gentleman got hit on Griffin Road in, in our town Friday, or one day during the week.
We do, actually, it was, I believe, yesterday, council member, we had, it was actually a Cooper City resident who was hit by 126 in Griffin, by that flyover bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, on Griffin Road, yes.
But it was a pretty big discussion today. There's a lot of money out there, and one of them is a Tiger Grant, that, so they're trying to figure out what they can do, and it's going to be a major problem. They talked about putting up, you know, barriers where the bicycles would be, and all of it, but it's, it really gets into a lot of work. But the main thing is, they just won't make people aware to try to be careful of the bicycle riders and stuff, and, and it just so happened, there was another item that was coming up later in the day, and it was the one on 10th Street. I don't know how many of you people travel the Sawgrass Expressway, it ends up at, right there at the turnpike, and then if you go further, you go to 10th Street to get to 95. Well, there's plans in the future to increase the Sawgrass Expressway all the way to 75. To do this, it had to go by Century Village. We had a room full of Century Village people at our meeting, and most of them are bicycle riders, so we heard a lot about that. But then on the, on the 10th Street, it's, it's not going to happen today, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but it's going to be studied, and it's been, they're going to think, think what's going to be the best way to handle it, to alleviate the traffic problem they have on that area for everybody, and their, most of the opposition was against it, but like I say, most of them were Century Village people. There had three people there that live in the general neighborhood, want it the other way, because of the, I don't know how many of you people travel that early in the morning, late in the afternoon, but it's very bad, it's hard to get. One lady was there that testified today that it took her, I think, 45 minutes to go from the turnpike to 95, because you have to go through, I think it's three, three or four red lights. And you're, you're lucky if you get through those red lights three times, you know, where you're there, sitting there probably three times before you get there, so you can get through. It is a problem, and it's going to be a problem, and we don't, it's, it's going to be studied, and then it'll come back for us. We don't make those decisions, all we do is listen to it, and we held the first, that meeting today on it. And, but it's going to be coming up, so I don't know how, I travel that quite a bit, and it's, it is a problem. Locally here, Mary Gay, you're lucky. They built, Pembroke Pines built a football field on the other side of the canal, and it's a professional field now. It's artificial grass, costs something like two or three million. Those lights, they turn those lights on, they're from here, just outside that door from my, my house. And the worst part is, the kids play with that loudspeaker system all day during the day. I woke up this morning, at 4:30, 5 o'clock, and I heard this music. I said, where? They forgot to turn their music off last night, and it was blaring out there in the field this morning. But, there's nothing, I mean, let's face it, if you can do anything, tell me how, because I ain't, I ain't getting no help of mine over there. Now, I'll get back to our main thing we got here, is our fishing hole part, is moving along great. We had the landscaper come in there and cut it for the first time. If you haven't had a chance, go by and look at it, it looks real good. We had a meeting, Andy held a meeting with all the people involved, and we set up a program, where we're going, when we're going. And what I'm... And what I'm asking Andy to do, and I'm gonna talk to the council about it again tonight, we've got a problem there. And I asked you people for some money before, and you gave it to me, but I never used it. So I'm gonna ask you again. I think for $10,000, what we've got there, if you haven't had a chance to go out there and look at it, where we built the fishing, excuse me, the playground and where we're doing the bathrooms and parking lot, then if you go further south for about, I'd say it's a hundred and something, maybe 140 feet, that's the line where you start to get into the trees. That area right now is full of invasive species trees. Some of them are 20, 25-foot tall. In that spot, there's a bunch and bunch of, a lot of fill that we brought in there. And that's where my problem is. You know, I'm getting all this free fill, but I'm running out of place to put it. And we really, everybody, our engineer tellers will keep getting it because we're gonna need it when we demuck for the horse trail. And a lot of places, we need it. But we need to clear those evasive out of there and straighten the fill out and do that. And then whenever they come in to do the next phase, which is gonna be the mitigation area, you can at least get in there. But right now, that area in there, I'm just estimating, but I'm gonna get somebody to go give me a pretty close. I think we can do it for $10,000. You know, last time you gave me $10,000, and we worked on that other area, the parking lots, and it worked out real good. And I'm pretty sure some of our local people would bid on it to do that. And what we've gotta do is push those trees in, push them in a pile, get them cleared away, get our fill situated. Because what we're doing, like, I guess it was, when we had a meeting today, we had a meeting, I got a call that morning. Guy called me, he said, Freddie, I got a full moon full going in the west end, and it's all good road rock, you know. So that's ten or twelve truckloads that they put in there. But we're running out of room to put this fill. And if we could clear that area, it's gonna help us because it's hindering anything we're doing now. And Emily was working, she has a little bit of extra money. I don't know if you come up with anything, but I want y'all's approval so that she can tell which way to go. But I think it's gonna help us in the long run.
Well, if you don't mind, I mean, I think it's great. I think that's how those parks are gonna get done, is, you know, wisely using dollars here and there and trying to make the most of things that we can get, you know, from other folks that donate either their time or their resources to it. So I think it's a great idea. Certainly would support it.
I'll support it also. We just gotta find out if it's the money we have in the center, what we can do.
I'll support it.
Okay. You got it, Emily. Thanks. All right.
I'd just like, you know, scope and an objective. You know, what's gonna be accomplished as a result of that? And just a little bit more information. I see you're shaking your head, Andy. So I don't have any objections to it, Freddie. Just a little more specific information.
Well, I think we're gonna still work within the money from the bid, aren't we? Because we've got to demuck all that area in there for the horse trail. And that's what we're using this fill in. So if she can squeeze that $10,000, it's not gonna come out of general fund. My understanding is, Andy, it's gonna be out of the...
The meeting, we had a meeting last Thursday. And that's why we sat down and went through fishing hole park of where we are and the different aspects of it, and the timelines. And there was a discussion that Councilmember Fisickelli had advanced to clear an additional area a little bit, which is ultimately slated to be cleared, which will give us some working room for some of the upcoming, perhaps the restroom construction and for some additional fill. So Werner Vaughn was there from Winningham and Fradley, Emily, December, myself, in addition to the council member. We all, we're all, we're all in complete agreement that it does make sense to clear that. What we're doing at this point, from a staff standpoint, is just looking at what's in that budget now. Rather than asking you to appropriate additional money, we wanna make sure we have that money, some money in the budget in order to do that. And I'll say we've been a little bit short-staffed as Emily's been wearing multiple hats in the back and December was dealing with Water Matters Day. But I should have an answer on that, really, in the next day or so, what funding we think we have available already in that budget to do some additional clearing.
Very good, Andy. Absolutely, Freddie.
I got one more item I forgot on the MPO. One of the things we went over today was our 20-year plan. And they give us this thing showing where everything going. And on that 20-year plan, there's two items that really affect us. One of them is 184th Avenue, which is in there for something like 2026. Then it wasn't there, but I'm gonna ask Emily for this. Emily, when you got your, that request from them of what we were gonna look at in the 20-year plan, was it widen Griffin Road on that? Well, he didn't have it on there today. And I called him on, I called him down on it. He said, oh, no, we're gonna add that. I don't know why he's gonna add it, because it was there before. But it's on the 20-year plan to widen Griffin Road from 188th all the way out to US 27. But as far as going, you know, I talked to him today and about what would we have to do to move it. And he said, Freddie, you're not gonna move it too much because it just ain't no money. But I really think we need to see if we can step that up. If that school's coming up, that's gotta be done. And I think that we can do whatever. But Greg, I talked to Greg about it today, Andy. And of course, he had a cold, he wasn't feeling too good. But he just shook his head. He said, Freddie, there just ain't no money out there. But I get there and I see him giving bicycle pass money, I can赠 everything money. I think we can squeeze, we get enough people there, we can squeeze it, I think. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie. Any other council member comments? I don't have any at this time. That concludes item number seven. Item number eight, legal comments.
Mayor, just real quick...
Not keep, keep.
It's okay. Ketum.
Ketum, I'm sorry.
It's okay. As I told you, they meant get 'em, but it was close enough.
Little inside joke.
Typos and complaints that people have drafted against the town this week. Mayor, in regards to code enforcement, I spoke to Robert earlier. We collected a check today for close to $94,000 for a property that we've been trying to bring into compliance for some time now. Our number from fiscal year to date is close to $250,000, which is almost double where we ended up last year at the end of the year. Two things are really factors for that. One is a lot of the properties in the town this year, we've seen a tremendous rise in turnover of properties. Properties that were in financial trouble are now being acquired. And the new owners are coming in and are really starting to step up to the plate and bring the properties into compliance. And the second issue is when you all passed your resolution ensuring that the mitigation would only be up to the maximum amount, it leaves the banks with very little wiggle room. So they're just paying it rather than fighting, which is what we experienced in the past. So I just wanted to give you a brief update on that. One other thing that I mentioned to the captain last week that I just wanna make sure is on television. Davie's done a phenomenal job with our residents who have gone out of town with their vacation watch. And a lot of people don't know that that program exists. So I wanna make sure that everyone knows it exists. If you're going out of town, you can register on their website. They have a wonderful registration, easy. You can call them for Newell, who, you know, I know you're looking at me about the computer issue. You can call them, and they'll come by your house. It's a service offered to our residents free of charge. They'll drive by and make sure that everything's okay. And it's a great program, and hopefully more residents will use it. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Kett.
Thank you, Ketum. That concludes administrative, or legal comments. Item number nine, administration comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And just to continue on, Kevin was speaking about the Davie Police contract. And Captain Moore gave me earlier some brochures that Davie Police have put together. It says the start of a new partnership and has a copy of the uniform patch that has Davie Police along with Southwest Ranches. So I do wanna send this down so that you can all grab a copy of that. And that talks about some of those services that will be available to our residents. So just to further the comments that Keith had made previously. I know you're all very tired of looking at the surplus BSO vehicles that are, that continue to be parked out in our parking lot. We received the titles from BSO last Friday. We've gotten those vehicles registered. So we're finally in the process where we're able to move forward. And I would expect that our next council meeting, I will bring you a resolution to surplus those vehicles. So we'll start on that process. Parking lot lights, I spoke about at the last meeting. They have been received by our contractor, and they're scheduled for installation next week. The barn renovations, the selection and negotiating committee met yesterday. They had presentations from the respondents. There's been a recommendation that's been advanced to me, at least the scoring from that. And I'm in the process of reviewing that. So should that fall into place, we hope to bring you a recommendation as soon as potentially the next council meeting. Again, as long as everything is in line and we're comfortable with that recommendation. The fire operational study, that is drawing to a close. The fire consultant will be here on Wednesday, the 26th, to do a presentation for the fire advisory board. And they will be here the night of the 27th to make that same recommendation to you as counsel. I know we've spoken in the past that you're gonna look for the fire advisory board to make recommendations to you so that you have some time to consider that with their recommendations. At this point, I have received draft copies of eight of the 12 chapters. So I have, I'd like to say I have some idea where they're going. But chapter 12, which I do not have, is the summary of options and recommendations. So that one, that most critical one is still pending. You know, we're getting those in kind of a chapter by chapter. Certainly, as soon as that is completed and we've received that, I will share that with all of you. And last but not least, we had some vandalism on the gates out at 199 and 202 last night. This was probably the most serious damage that we've had done to them in the past. However, there were some residents out there who were able to follow the vehicle that did the damage. And, you know, I'm optimistic we'll have a very good lead on that. And maybe we could bring that to, certainly to a positive close for the town. And that would go a long way towards alleviating some of that further damage. But Davie Police are working on that for us. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. Short one tonight.
Thank you, Andy. Friend and coworker of Ketum's. That concludes item number nine. Item number 10 is a resolution. Erica?
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the Town Administrator selection of Russell Muniz, MMC, as the Town Clerk of the Town of Southwest Ranches, authorizing the Mayor, Town Administrator, and Town Attorney to enter to a contract with Russell Muniz, which establishes the scope, compensation, and benefits for the Town Clerk's services and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Erica. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, as you know, unfortunately, our dear clerk, Erica Santa Maria, will be leaving the town and...
I don't wanna talk about that.
Neither do I. However, it's very important that the business of the town continues onward. And towards that end, we had advertised for a clerk. And I'm bringing you tonight my recommendation, Russell Muniz, who is here tonight in the audience. Certainly for your consideration, contract approval so that we can go forward and continue the important business of the town.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
Vince Philatta, PO Box 291507, Navy, Florida. And I'm a resident of Southwest Ranches. Again, my question is, as always, is Mr. Munz going to be commuting? Or is he gonna be living within striking distance of the town?
Andy's gonna write down these questions, and I'll, Vince, and I'll make sure that they get answered.
Make a pardon?
I said Andy's writing these questions down, and I promise you they'll be answered.
Thank you.
He's within striking distance right now, actually.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Just a couple of thoughts. We'd like to know more about Russell, his background, past, where he's worked, that sort of stuff. Having been blocked out by state law from knowing any of this, it's still not 30 days, but after a conclusion of it. But we'd sure like to know some information. And I'd like to know how he's gonna fit into the high-heeled shoes that Largely says that he's leaving, that he's going to have to fill. And they've been done so expertly by our present Town Clerk. And we are going to miss her. So we may come down and harass her sometime, whenever we're down by the airport. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Any other public comment? See no further public comment. Public comment is now closed. I'm gonna turn it over, I'm gonna get Andy to answer those questions, Freddie, and then I'll get to you.
I agree.
Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The first question is an easy one. Russell is a neighbor. He lives in Davie. He's been in this area for a long time. And as to a little bit more about his background, Mr. Mayor, if it's all right with you, I'd like to ask him to come up and maybe introduce himself and talk a little bit about his background. I think he's the best person to answer those questions about him.
Agree.
Mayor and counsel?
Russell, good to see you. Welcome.
You can grab that mic and hold it if you'd like.
Oh, okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for the questions. I am in Davie, I'm right across the canal, so I'm very close. As far as my background is concerned, I've been local government for about 18 years now. I have a master's degree in public administration as well as a master's degree in business administration. I have the Master of Municipal Clerk designation, which is conferred by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. I've just, I've seen and done quite a bit in this community. I previously worked for the Town of Davie for 13 years. And I won't tell you who I worked for before that. I don't think you'd be too happy about that. Just say you're a neighbor to the south. But I am familiar with Broward County, obviously. Been down here a long time. And looking forward to the opportunity to work with all of you.
Fantastic, Russell. Welcome. I'm sure we have many opportunities in the very near future to have conversations and get to know each other. What size shoe do you wear, by the way? Just kidding.
Size.
Yes, kidding. Yes, kidding. Welcome, almost, Russell. It's a pleasure. Appreciate your time. Freddie?
Russell, one of my questions, have you been a Town Clerk before?
Yes, that was my position with the Town of Davie. I was a Town Clerk for 13 years.
Good. And you live close, that's, those are my two things. Being there, I know you've had handled election before because that's one of her big jobs, election. So that's...
Thank you. Absolutely.
Any other questions? Good. Okay. Russell, again, pleasure. Look forward to having extended conversation. And almost welcome to the Town of Southwest Ranches because we do have a motion and a second to approve.
Motion to approve.
We got that. We got a motion and a second. Okay. Motion is second to approve. Erica, call the question, please.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. And that concludes item number 10. And Russell, welcome to the Town of Southwest Ranches. You have some big shoes to fill, that's for sure.
I look forward to seeing you all on Monday.
Thank you, Russell.
Russell, we don't have to worry about giving you pregnancy leave.
And I see your wife sitting over there with you as well. Maybe you wanna introduce your wife? Sure, absolutely. Welcome. Very nice to meet you. Okay, item number 11, another resolution. Erica?
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the first modification to the agreement with Cleaning Systems Incorporated for Town Hall Janitorial Services, Janitorial Services, approving an additional one-year term, authorizing the mayor, Town Administrator, and Town Attorney to enter into the first modification to the agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Erica. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, this is, was it an original two-year contract? This is the company that does the cleaning here in Town Hall. This is a one-year renewal. We are certainly pleased with the job they've been doing for us, and certainly recommend extending that contract for another year at this time.
Thank you, Andy.
Much to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, Counsel? We have a motion and a second to approve. Call the question, please, Erica.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes. Item number 12, another resolution.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, mending Resolution Number 2014-007, the Town Council meeting scheduled for the calendar year 2014, by rescheduling the September 11th, 2014 Town Council meeting to September 15th, 2014, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Erica. Andy?
Motion approved.
Second.
It's pretty much self-explanatory. Okay, got a motion, second to approve. Any members of public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Any other additional questions, comments, or concerns? I see you leaning over there, Doug.
One thing, I just want to tell you, I'm going to be on a fishing trip, so I may be calling in.
You got it.[729.37][729.37](Laughter). Whatever you need, Doug. Whatever you need.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
I do think, Andy, that it's going to be important. It's an important meeting, and it's going to be on an unusual day, so I think we need to make sure that all the advertising gets out, and we do an extra effort to make sure that the public is aware of this, not only that they show up on the right day, but that they're not showing up on the wrong day.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to approve. Erica, call the question, please.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes. Item number 13, discussion, town goals. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. This was something that I supplied all of you, kind of an updated list on where we are with this. These were the goals that I'll say I stepped into, that the Town Council had established prior to my getting here. We've been trying to work on these as time has gone by. I furnished you all with copies on this that have updates in red from 2012, and further updates from 2013, from our progress on it, and, you know, we could just kind of go through one by one if you choose, Mayor. It might be the easiest way to do it. I think most of them will probably go very quickly, but it's a way of just reviewing the status on where we are with these, and certainly if there's anything else Council would like to put on the table, it'd be a good time to do that as well.
I don't have a problem with that. Andy, Counsel, your direction?
Sounds good.
Do it one by one? Okay. I want to go through them one by one, Andy.
Okay, the first one was, this originally dates back to March 2011. It's finalizing the CCA project. My update from 2012 was pending, no activity at present. CCA has been notified of our desire to proceed. The update in 2013, we're no changes on this item. We're proceeding cautiously with litigation, and will continue to monitor appropriately. And I would suggest at this point, there's no changes to that.
Counsel, any comments on that goal?
I do have a comment on that, and it not only applies to this goal, but it applies to a lot of them, that I think, I would prefer that this list be more of achievable goals, goals that we're actively working on. I think this is something that is going to, you know, come and go as issues, as that property, you know, interest or non-interest is out there on that property. But as far as CCA and the contract specifically that was associated with this, I think that's water that's already under the bridge, and so I would rather see us pare down this list of goals to ones that we can actively work on. I don't see this one as being one of those, so frankly, I would remove it from the list. And I'll probably say that about several others as we get to them.
Okay. I don't have any problem with that.
I don't either.
Yep, that's a consensus.
That's good.
All right.
Okay, the next goal, which also goes back to March 2011, is evaluate the possibility of creating a Southwest Ranches Fire Department. As I spoke to earlier, the fire operational study is currently underway, so there are decisions ahead for you on this. I'm not sure that we need it on the list of goals at this point. This is very much on the front burner for 2014, for this current year, 2014.
Counsel, Steve?
Well, I mean, I think it is a goal for this year, so I think it does belong on the list, even though, I mean, just, we are actively working on it, which I think is fantastic, and I think our goal is to wrap it up here fairly quickly, but I think it's a goal.
I've had the opportunity to sit on some of these meetings, and people, I tell you this, we got one of the, I'm not knocking any of the boards, but we got, that board is, it's got a lot of expertise in this. Most all of them are ex-chief of fire departments, so they're doing well.
Counsel, consensus, goal? Everybody, well, it's on the burner, it's self-explanatory, I guess. We're getting ready to...
It's coming forward.
Yeah, we're getting ready to get that report. Okay. Andy?
Okay, the next goal would be update the personnel manual. As you recall, last year, we completed an employee study. We looked at our positions, and the personnel manual is currently being updated as we speak at present time, so it is underway.
Good. Okay. Next one.
The next one was, this goes back to March 2012, possible millage reduction, balance the budget without tax increase or use of reserves. We did that in last year, or the year before last, we had a slight decrease. The past year, we had a very slight increase. We returned to the town's historical millage rate. I'm not sure this needs to be a goal. I think this is just prudent financial management and something that we, as a matter of course, need to do.
Yeah, that would be my, that's a very similar comment myself. I think it's, we need to be prudent with the town's money. We need to do it, you know, handle it properly, and I'm not sure that's a, this is necessarily a town goal, you know, to, by the way, it's listed...
That one's done.
The way it's listed, now, I think the important thing is to handle the money properly.
I think it's probably yearly goal and objective. Obviously, the budget hearings will be upcoming here very soon.
Right.
And hopefully, we can maintain that historical groundwork that's been established previously. Next one, Andy?
The next one says, develop a plan to bring to fruition the public safety building. This is something we're currently carrying forward in the budget. We're showing it as unfunded, but we do have it on our radar. It's remained in the budget book. The future direction certainly is unclear, and I would say that this probably also closely ties, but not completely, but closely ties to the fire study and the decisions that Counsel will make on that in the upcoming months.
I think this falls in your category there, Steve. I don't think it should be a goal anymore. I mean, it's a goal in the future, but nothing we're going to work in, because it's going to take, you know, we're very comfortable here.
Right.
Unless something comes up.
No, that's exactly, this was another one that fell in that same category. I mean, I do think it's an objective of the town, but I would rather have this list be really achievable goals that we're actively working on, and I don't really see this one as being one of those. So I would remove it.
I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay, Mayor, the next one is commercial development on Flamengo and Sheridan site. I guess the last council meeting, Emily McCord presented the recommendations to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board. That was one of the sites that was in there. I'll say that I got a mixed consensus, but I would say the majority of Counsel seemed to be opposed to this development on this site at that time. So I don't know if we want to carry that forward as a goal, or if we want to remove it at this point. Certainly open to direction from Counsel.
My tendency would be to remove it.
I'd remove it.
Yeah.
Remove it.
Yeah, actually, Andy, that's a piece of residential property, and that's what we plan to put there, is residential property.
It is own, it is own residential now, yes. Okay. The next is drainage improvements. We're out on Southwest 210th Terrace, and those have been completed.
Yeah, and I think that's worth noting, is that, you know, we'll see there's a number of ones here, and we've already had a couple. I don't think we should just breeze over them. I think a lot has gotten done and things that we kind of just take for granted, but a lot of these goals are significant goals, and they have been completed, and this is one of them. I know it's made a huge difference out on 210. That road was literally under six to 12, sometimes more than 12 inches of water after a decent rainstorm, and now it drains nicely, so it's huge.
Okay. The next is, this is also from March 2012, developing access to south of 198th Avenue. There's really no current activity, although that's...
I think that's 188. I think it's a typo.
I was going to say, it doesn't, yeah, 198.
Yeah, it doesn't look right. I'm thinking now. Yeah, 188.
Yeah, it must be 188, and that's just one of the things that we're looking forward, we're looking into, is we went through our traffic meetings with the community and working with traffic engineer, so that's part of that process.
It's actually ongoing.
Yeah, I would leave that on there, because that is something we're working on.
Yeah.
I don't expect it to be completed this year, but it is something we're working on.
Okay. The next one is implement commercial business registration program, and that's not something that's been any direction from this Counsel, certainly the time that I've been here. As I've alluded in the past, there was some movement in Tallahassee to do away with that, what used to be the occupational licenses, the business revenue receipts.
You know, my, I don't know, I'd be very curious to hear what the rest of the Counsel thinks on this. My inclination on this is to modify this goal more along the lines of a certificate of use, so that we have that understanding of what's going on in the town, but not a new tax or a new, a new...
If I may add to that, Counselmember?
Sure.
We currently have a certificate of use process that's handled by Milgram Planning Group, that's a, but it's a one-time process, it's not annual.
Right, and I think what's happened with that is that a combination of folks that never really even apply for it, and those that applied for it once, and the world has changed, you know, 10 years later, I'm not sure that there's really, my understanding is there's not really a lot of valuable information or accuracy with those today. And so I think that would be something that would be worth talking about, and maybe coming up with a reasonable way of implementing. But that's just, that's why I throw it out there to see what the rest of the Counsel thinks, but I think it can make some sense going forward.
I think it's a good idea, just think how we implement it, and how we're going to get it done, and how it's going to work.
I agree. I mean, it's not, it's not something that we can just throw in on Monday and decide that, you know, this is, it's going to take some, it's going to take some effort to do this the right way for Southwest Ranches.
I like a challenge.
You like change?
I like a challenge.
Good, good, so...
It was easy, anybody could do it.
So I would change the wording on that a little bit, but retain it.
We'll modify it, okay. The next one, something we've talked about a little bit today, expanding funding Southwest 184th Avenue, and that's...
I think it's ongoing, Andy. I mean, our, our, I mean, our study showed that it needs to be done sometime in the future, and MPOs say it needs to be sometime in the future, so...
Okay, so no changes to that one. We'll leave it at as a goal, but no changes. Okay?
It's ongoing.
Freddie, I know you'll like the next one, development of fishing hole park.
It's ongoing. It's going to be a long process. It's up to Emily, how fast she can get those grants in here.
Okay. All right, the next one is one that I think we can take off, the road closures at 199th, 202, and 205th Avenue.
Done.
And I think, you know, once again, that's another one of those ones that this town was working on for many, 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 many years, and it's a major accomplishment to be able to do that. And certainly, all the traffic issues are not resolved, but that was a big step forward, so...
Okay. The next one is explore various options for the broad wing property, and there's really been no activity on that. I will tell you that we've been able to minimize our CubeSmart storage costs, because we have some things that we're actually storing in that building, so we've moved some things over there. Other than that, there's really no options in play at the moment for that property.
Andy, I'm going to ask a question. What are we talking about there?
That's the property on the north side of Griffin, almost all the way out to the cemetery.
Across the street.
That little triangular piece there between Griffin and the canal.
Used to be a cell site.
Repeat station?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave that on the list, just something to keep it on our radar.
I hope we don't get cited for not cutting the grass.[1510.12][1510.12](Laughter).
Andy knows the code enforcement director.
All right, the next item is completion of the solid waste contract, and as you all know, not only has that been completed, but it actually scored very highly with our residents on the recent survey. The next is develop funding plan for the Griffin 345, 185 to 188 project. Obviously, that's something where Councilmember Bray Cruz and staff is working on. We've had some community meetings, and we're working on that, so that obviously needs to stay on here and stay on our radar.
Okay.
The next is the possible purchase of the property adjacent to Town Hall on the west side, or, and/or the property adjacent to the volunteer fire department, and there's, you know, we're certainly aware of those properties. There's no activity. Staff certainly has not been approached by either property owner looking to sell, but it is something we will continue to just keep an eye on. The next goal is improving roads within the town, and that's obviously what the heart of the TIS Door Plan that we're working on, so that will stay on here. It is something we are actively working on. The next item is resolving flooding issues within the town. It's just one of those things that we do, working with the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board, as they assess and rank the priorities based on what we can afford to do, and then we pursue the Central Broward and South Broward Drainage District for opportunities to partner on drainage improvements, so that we can work to better those issues here in our community. So I think that really needs to stay on our radar.
Mayor, a couple of things, really, on those two, improving the roads in town and also the flooding issues. I think they both are important and critical to keep on there, but I do think that it might make sense to, through the administration, give some more detail to that. That's pretty high level.